Welcome, everybody. It's good to have everybody here tonight. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Abraham.
Present.
Mr. Gault.
Present.
Mr. Kahler.
Present.
Mr. Watkins.
Present.
Mayor Paxton.
Present. We've been having a guest minister come to give the invocation. He was unable to come tonight, so I've asked Mr. Abraham to give the invocation and Commissioner Gault to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Lee, stand.
Our Father, who art in heaven, we thank you so much for this wonderful day. Father, we thank you for the opportunity that you've given us to serve. Father, we are forever mindful that we, as city leaders, stand in a position that is looked upon, and rightly so, by our constituents. That the decisions we make are decisions to better the community and enhance the lives of the people in it. We answer that you got this meeting in your spirit. These things we ask in the Savior's name. Amen.
Amen.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to its republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Mr. City Major, any additions or deletions?
No, we will have executive session following the meeting on a couple of items.
All right. All right. Police Chief is here. Chief Berry, if you'll come forward, I believe you have a recognition to make tonight.
Like to say, good evening, Mayor Paxton, Commissioners, City Manager, and audience. We had a tough, tough job this year on selecting the Employee of the Year. The nominations were just incredible, but in the final analysis, also Nathan Jammit was the person we selected. He will be featured in our annual report, which we just sent out to the press. And I'll just let Captain Kruger take it from here, because Captain Kruger nominated Officer Jammit. And the interesting thing about it is that the employees themselves nominate these folks for Employee of the Year, civilian and sworn. So, Captain Kruger?
Thank you, Chief. Good evening.
Evening.
It was my pleasure to nominate Officer Jammit for this award of recognition. He just did an exceptional job this past year. Just a brief overview, percentage-wise, he had a 79 percent clearance rate on cases, 183 individual cases encompassing 301 total charges. Citations related to traffic enforcement were just through the roof. He was also selected and received the Governor's Impaired Driving Enforcement Award for 2011, placing first in Division Four, which is for law enforcement agencies of 51 to 150 officers. Coupled with these facts are, or something that I did consider coupled with these facts is that there were no specifically, specific citizen-generated complaints towards Officer Jammit in reference to his conduct or procedures, which just speaks volumes to me. Obviously, he's very adept at dealing with tough situations and speaking with people and basically making us look good as an agency. So it was my honor to nominate him for this award.
Great, great. Is he here tonight?
He is.
All right.
I think it's worthwhile that, from a statistics point of view, that some of the statistics are being read.
Sure. I'll cover some of the specifics. He had, of the 183 cases that I mentioned, he had 67 drug offense charges, seven drug trafficking charges, five weapons charges, one manufacturing methamphetamine charge. He had, his arrest represented 6 percent of the overall arrests for the entire department. I don't see the citation data in here, and this is a new format for me, but I think his citation data basically represented 4 percent of the total of citations for the department as well. So it's like I previously said, and just a phenomenal effort on his part and a job well done.
Well, congratulations, Officer Nathan. How long have you been with Force?
Four years in June.
Four years. Were you in police work before that?
No, I went to college at SIU.
Did you? Yeah, yeah, I remember when we inducted you.
Yep.
Quick four years, hadn't it?
Very quick four years.
Yeah. Well, we just want to say that we're proud of you. I think every time we induct new police officers, I tell them that I want officers that are dedicated. We are bound and determined, as a commission, and Chief Berry is on the same page along with his team to make Paducah safe, to let the citizens know that they are safe, and so we need good police officers. And obviously, you're one of the best. So, on behalf of this city commission, I just want to say congratulations and keep up the good work.
Thank you very much.
And I might just throw it open to the commission. Commissioner Watkins?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, Nathan, I'd just like to reiterate what the mayor said and tell you that we're proud of you. Paducah's proud of you. The Police Department's proud of you. We have a great Police Department, a great chief, and it just makes me really proud to see the job that y'all do and the way that you conduct yourself, the professionalism. And this is, you know, this is one heck of an honor, Employee of the Year. That's great. And to be nominated by Captain Kruger and, you know, elected by your fellow officers and selected by the administration just says a lot for it. We're proud to have you here, and I can see that S showing through your shirt there on your chest with all these arrest statistics. I don't know how you did that, but congratulations, you're doing a great job.
Mayor Protem?
Jammit?
That's correct.
What really impressed me about what I saw here tonight is that it's important to consider that there were no formal citizen complaints specifically generated in reference to Officer Jammit's conduct or procedures in 2011. And, you know, I think that's so important as a police officer and with our Police Department, that you treat people right, you're fair to them. You have to be tough, you have to enforce the law, but your communication skills shows that too in this sentence here, so thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Gault?
Again, I'd like to echo what the other Commissioners have said, but as the chief often says, that when we hire a new officer, his family comes along, and I think you may have some members of your family here that we would like to let our appreciation known for supporting you and what you do every day, and if you would like to recognize them, maybe now's a good time to do that. I see them out there in the crowd and...
My father on the right, my mother, my wife.
I thought that might have been a smile of a proud mother out there. Thank you all.
Mr. Abraham?
Thank you, Mayor. It's a testament to your training and your, and the type of person that you are, introducing your mom and your dad, all that goes into the fabric when you're doing a job. And it's rough sometimes when you have to enforce, you enforce the law, and you're nice about it, you know? You take somebody to jail and they say, "Well, thank you." That's a little exaggerated, but you get what I'm saying. It's, I think Chief Berry and his staff is creating, has created, an environment that young people want to be a part of, and we have a lot of young officers, and you're one of them, and Employee of the Year. Right now, you're top of the heap, man. Appreciate you.
So you're suggesting our Police Department be business-friendly?
Oh, yeah. Now, you understand I gotta put these cuffs on you. Do it nice, man.
Chief, where do we stand on manpower now in the department?
Well, I've been over two and a half years, and for the first time, hallelujah. For the first time, tonight we're hiring three, and we'll be at 78, which is our total manpower allotment. However, we also will give another test in May, because there are two or three people that could retire at any time. But tonight, with hiring three, we'll be at, right at 78, which is our total manpower.
All right.
First time.
Good, way to go.
Is now the appropriate time to bring them up, or are you gonna bring them up later?
When you get to personnel, probably.
Okay, all right.
Thank you all. Congratulations.
Congratulations, Nathan.
All right, Commissioner Abraham, minutes?
I move that the reading of the minutes for February 14, 2012, meeting be waived and that the minutes of said meetings prepared by the city clerk be approved as written.
Second.
Questions? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Abraham?
Aye.
Mr. Gault?
Aye.
Mr. Kahler?
Aye.
Mr. Watkins?
Aye.
Mayor Paxton?
Aye. We have a resolution to read, but before I read it, I would like to call Steve Irvin up to the podium to explain it, please. Steve? Yes, sir?
Mayor Commission? Dr. Zen Ming Wong is the Director of the Geologic Hazard Section of the Kentucky Geological Survey, and Dr. James Cobb is the Director of the Kentucky Geological Survey of the University of Kentucky. Both have been reviewing the methods of how the United States Geological Survey maps earthquake hazards on what is called the National Seismic Hazard Map. Dr. Wang and Dr. Cobb believe that western Kentucky is not as much of a risk for intense or frequency of earthquake as USGS has the region mapped. This has a direct impact on building codes, risk assessments, and other public policy issues, including new uses that may be interested in utilizing the Paducah Gaseous Diffusion Plant. Dr. Wong and Dr. Cobb believe that if the USGS were to use a new methodology to map western Kentucky in accordance with their research and findings, this area would have less of a hazard on the National Seismic Map. Dr. Wong has requested support in their efforts to research and engage the USGS to review the National Seismic Hazard Map. And it just turns out that Dr. Wong, right now, is attending the Central U.S. Earthquake Consortium, which is being held in Memphis tomorrow and Thursday.
Well, I will now read the resolution. A resolution of the City of Paducah recommending the United States Geological Survey to review the National Seismic Hazard Map based upon research by Dr. Wang and Dr. Cobb of the Kentucky Geological Survey at the University of Kentucky. Whereas the NSHM shows western Kentucky to be in an area prone to earthquakes in quantities as high and as exceeding that of Los Angeles and San Francisco. And whereas the Kentucky Geological Survey is of the opinion, the way the USGS determines western Kentucky earthquake hazard risk is incorrect, and recommends different methodology to the USGS to determine the risk. And whereas the NSHM influences building codes, insurance rates, risk assessments, federal facilities, siting decisions, and other public policy issues. And whereas the NSHM has a direct bearing on the future of western Kentucky and all its new federal facilities, including facilities that may be considering the Paducah Gaseous Diffusion Plant site. And whereas the Kentucky Geological Survey at the University of Kentucky has found that the Commonwealth of Kentucky has lost economic development opportunities due to perceived extremely high seismic hazards. And now therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the City of Paducah, Kentucky as follows. Section one, that the City Commission hereby supports the Kentucky Geological Survey in its efforts in supporting research to engage the USGS to review the NSHM. Section two, that the City Commission understands that economic development is vital to our residents' quality of life, our standard of living, and increased job opportunities. Section three, this resolution shall be in full force in effect from and after its adoption. Any other comments?
Sir?
Any questions from the commission?
Well, could Steve, because I'm not sure everybody understands what area that covers?
Generally, it's from western Tennessee up through into southern Illinois, western Kentucky, and also southeast Missouri.
Okay, I thought there was another smaller area that we're the concentration that...
The concentration is down towards Real Foot Lake, and I think there's three different spurs of concentration for the New Madrid Fault.
Okay.
There has been a lot of feeling for several years that the earthquake possibilities are not as great, nor will it be as severe as they have thought. And so, we're trying to get the federal agencies to realize that, which would be a tremendous boom, as we said here, in our building codes and et cetera. So, it's exactly the right thing to do. It will help Chad in economic development. It'll help us all. So, if I could, could I have a motion that we accept the resolution as written?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay, any questions? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Abraham?
Aye.
Mr. Gault?
Aye.
Mr. Kahler?
Aye.
Mr. Watkins?
Aye.
Mayor Paxton?
Aye. I will sign that, and we will get that off. Thank you all. Municipal order, Commissioner Gault?
Upon the recommendation of the City Manager, the Board of Commissioners of the City of Paducah ordered that the personal changes on the attached list be approved.
Second.
All right, Mr. City Major?
A couple of things. The action regarding a new hire in the Parks Department, I want to scratch that. And we do have the three new police officer hirers who have attached biographies, and I think somebody's gonna make a presentation. Missy, is that you or the chief or how?
All right. Who's gonna make the introduction of the new fireman, policeman, excuse me?
I'm actually gonna turn it over to Chief Berry, but as he said, with these three officers that we have on the personnel actions, they will be starting on March 8th.
Okay.
So very shortly, they'll be onboard.
Good, good. All right, Chief?
This is a great pleasure that I'm gonna introduce these three new potential officers. In fact, I just have all three of them come up now. The first person I have is Nicholas M. Frascon, Frascon. He's from Calver City, educational history, Johnson City, Illinois High School, 2002. McHenry College, Lebanon, Illinois, bachelor's degree 2006. He also works for Franklin County Juvenile Attention Center in Benton, Illinois, working with juveniles, so that'd be a tremendous asset, as I mentioned to him when we talked in reference to this job. He's married, and his wife Jessica should be in the audience. Jessica? So that's Nicholas Frascon. You wanna individually, or just keep on with all the other two?
No, go ahead and finish them out.
Okay. And also, we have Joshua Anderson. He's from Benton, Kentucky. Marshall County High School, Draftonville, Kentucky, 1999. He was E4 in the United States Army, 2002 to 2004, with an honorable discharge. And Mr. Anderson is married, and his wife Daniella, is she here? Okay, she's not here. I want to also mention that his father, Mr. Terry Anderson, worked for a lot of years in the Marshall County Sheriff's Department, so runs in this family. And last but not least, this young lady has always said, for years, that she wanted to be a Paducah police officer. "I'm going to college to be a Paducah police officer. I don't want to work anywhere else but Paducah." And I am so happy that she's gonna get a chance to realize her dream, and that's all she wants. And I even said, "You sure you want to be Paducah?" "Chief, I want to be a Paducah police officer." So, I'm really happy for her. This is Courtney Rose from Keville, Kentucky. Graduated Heath High School, 2008. She attended Shawnee Community College, but graduated from Western Kentucky Community and Technical College recently, and associate's degree in 2011, and is in criminal justice. She also was highly recommended by retired Assistant Chief Gary Reese, who works at the college and runs the criminal justice program. And I am very, very pleased to say that everybody Gary has sent to me so far, we hired them, they were excellent candidates, so we're gonna continue that relationship with the community college, and that's the way it should work. And also, I thank Commissioner Watkins, was she a student?
She was, had her in class, and I was her advisor, so I'm real proud to see you on the Police Department, Courtney. It's your dreams come true.
Absolutely. So, these are three new hirers. We are at 78 now, and this is total manpower allocation that you guys gave me, so I'm pretty excited about that.
Well, ladies and gentlemen, congratulations. We're very proud of you all, all of you. You heard from our conversation earlier with Nathan of what kind of Police Department we want. We want a first-class Police Department. We want you all doing your job, doing it correctly, and with class, the way it's being done now, and I'm sure you will. So, I just want to say, congratulations. Make us proud, and I know we will be. You've got a wonderful team, you've got great leadership in Chief Berry and his team. So, keep Paducah safe and do your job, and I know we'll be proud of you. Congratulations. Okay.
I just want to recognize Courtney's mom and dad, they're in the audience, and that's part of that support system for her, so...
All right. You want to stand? Congratulations.
Chief Berry, just for statistics, how many female police officers do we have now?
Not enough. I think five. I think five, right? I think five.
So you're in an elite group there.
Yep.
Good.
You've got three more rising stars. You're doing a great job of hiring people, recruiting, and that just builds on what you already have and the foundation you've laid in transforming the Paducah Police Department into what it is, something we're all very, very, very proud of. And Josh, your dad was elected sheriff of Marshall County. How many terms? I know Terry, two terms he was elected sheriff, and so you've got an all-star team, all three of them are, and so we're proud of you, and I know you'll love working for our chief and the Paducah Police Department. It's a great career.
And I'd just like to add that so far, and I always say people identify with success, right now they're beating outdoors on to get hired by us, and that's a wonderful thing. And we're not only hiring good people, I mean, good folks for policing, but we're also hiring good people. And everybody that we've hired really are just wonderful people to be around, and that makes a whole lot of difference when they're out in that community interacting with folks. They're nice people in addition to being police officers, which is great.
That's what we want. Thank you, Chief. All right, Commissioner Kahler?
Can we vote on that, please?
Oh, we better vote on it, didn't we? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Abraham?
Aye.
Mr. Gault?
Aye.
Mr. Kahler?
Aye.
Mr. Watkins?
Aye.
Mayor Paxton?
Aye. Mr. Kahler?
I move that a municipal order entitled, "A Municipal Order Authorizing the Mayor to Execute an Application and All Documents Necessary for the Department of Main Street, Publicly Known as the Paducah Renaissance Alliance, in Partnership with Paducah Film Society, For and Our Town Matching Grant Funded by the National Endowment for the Arts, For $150,000 for Preparation of a Feasibility Study and Concept Design for the Columbia Theater Be Adopted."
Second.
Okay, Lisa? Hello. You want me to go over this, or you want to say in your own words, or how do you want to do it?
No, no, I mean, I can sort of, I mean, obviously, since I've been here since December, you know, one of the things that we realized is that we have this wonderful asset called the Columbia Theater that was owned by the city. And, you know, a lot of people have come to PRA with a dream about restoring it. It's gonna take a lot of money and a lot of people in this community to open up their wallets and sort of help us, but the Paducah Main Street Incorporated, which is our nonprofit sort of partner, is stepping up to the challenge of helping raise the funds to get a restoration effort started. And then it was brought to our attention that the National Endowment of Arts has an Art Town grant, so we are going to ask for the maximum amount of $150,000, which the nonprofit has agreed to try and raise from the community. And with those funds, we will do a feasibility study, environmental studies, we'll look at concept design planning, and all the things that it's gonna take to actually restore it and make it a viable theater for our community.
Yeah. This is exciting, Lisa. You know, we've got a beautiful theater. It needs to be renovated, and I think it will be an anchor to Upper Broadway when it is renovated. We have owned this theater for nine years. The City of Paducah was given the theater by the Kahler family for $1. It has been dark for 25 years. There's been a lot of potential investors, but we have not been able to get over the hump to restore it. So, Lisa and PRA plans on working with other volunteers to raise some money and have that theater open again. So, this is exciting, Lisa. Appreciate it.
Yeah, the Maiden Alley Cinema, Landy Bryant is actually helping us draft the grant application, which is very extensive, as I'm sure you all know. The Symphony has partnered with us as well as a co-applicant, as well as Mark House Theater, so.
Right.
Yeah, so it's a real, I mean, the community is really coming together, so.
Any questions for Lisa?
Well, it's a very attractive piece of property, and I'm anxious to see some renovations so we can attract an owner. Lenny Kravitz, as we all know, was interested in it and almost bought and bid on it and turned it into a recording studio and decided not to, but since he didn't, once you get in contact with Eric Clapton and see if he'd be interested, maybe we can land somebody like that.
Yeah. All right. Thank you, Lisa, very much. So we ready to vote. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Abraham?
Aye.
Mr. Gault?
Aye.
Mr. Kahler?
Aye.
Mr. Watkins?
Aye.
Mayor Paxton?
Aye. We have ordinances and adoptions. We will go over these fairly quickly, since we've talked about these for a while. Commissioner Watkins?
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance Authorizing the Mayor to Execute Change Order Number One with Kovach Mobile Equipment Corporation for the Purchase of a 2012 Fire Rescue Vehicle." This ordinance summarizes as follows. "The mayor is hereby authorized to execute change order number one with Kovach Mobile Equipment Corporation for an increase in the amount of $2,118 for the purchase of a 2012 fire rescue vehicle, increasing the total contract price to $151,578."
Second.
Questions? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Abraham?
Aye.
Mr. Gault?
Aye.
Mr. Kahler? Mr. Watkins?
Aye.
Mayor Paxton?
Aye.
Commissioner Abraham?
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance Authorizing the Mayor to Execute a Quick Claim Deed to BLP Development LLC for a Portion of a Private Access Road Within Conrad Heights Subdivision." This ordinance is summarized as follows. That the city of Paducah hereby authorizes the mayor to execute a quick claim deed to BLP Development LLC for a portion of a private access road within Conrad Heights Subdivision.
Second.
Okay, Rick, as we know, this could lead to an exciting development out there, and so this is a good thing, right?
May or may not, but we'll just see what time will tell.
See what time will tell. Good deal. Any questions for Rick? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Abraham?
Aye.
Mr. Gault?
Aye.
Mr. Kayler?
Aye.
Mr. Watkins?
Aye.
Mayor Paxton?
Aye.
Mr. Gault?
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance Authorizing the Purchase of Seventy-Two Various-Sized Dumpsters, Including Lids and Additional Fittings, to be Utilized by Commercial Businesses Within the City of Paducah, Kentucky." This ordinance is summarized as follows. That the Finance Director is authorized to pay $71,826 for the purchase of seventy-two various-sized dumpsters, including lids and additional fittings for the City of Paducah Engineering Public Works Department Solid Waste Division to be utilized by commercial businesses within the city of Paducah in compliance with the Kentucky State Purchasing Contract.
Second.
Okay, any questions for Rick on this? We've talked about this before. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Abraham?
Aye.
Mr. Gault?
Aye.
Mr. Kayler?
Aye.
Mr. Watkins?
Aye.
Mayor Paxton?
Aye.
Commissioner Kayler?
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance Authorizing the Mayor to Enter Into an Encroachment Agreement Between the City of Paducah and Neal C. and Ronna T. Ward for Encroachment and Utilization Upon a Portion of the City of Paducah Property." This ordinance is summarized as follows. That the city of Paducah hereby approves the encroachment agreement with Neal C. and Ronna T. Ward for encroaching upon and utilizing a small portion of a 25-foot alley right-of-way located south and adjacent to the ward's property located at 2429 Bridge Street, Paducah, Kentucky. Said encroachment area shall be approximately five feet wide by 31 feet long.
Second.
Okay, any questions for Rick on this? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Abraham?
Aye.
Mr. Gault?
Aye.
Mr. Kayler?
Aye.
Mr. Watkins?
Aye.
Mayor Paxton?
Aye.
Thank you, Rick. All right, we will now move into the workshop part of our meeting, and that is a discussion of the soccer complex property. We have Mr. Mark Thompson leading the way on that.
Nope, I don't want to do, I just turned it off. Oops, I hit the wrong button. Of course I hit the wrong button. Let me go ahead and pass these out. You've seen this before, so. Before I get started on this, I would like to, last week you all approved an important part of my team, and I would like, I asked him to come tonight so I could recognize him. After 10 years with us, we lost Trey Stevens, and he was the first one that started out as the park maintenance superintendent. But we felt that we brought on a good promotion of Les Evans. He was a supervisor with Parks Services and Park Maintenance before, and we have promoted him to park maintenance superintendent, and I appreciate that. And I just wanted y'all to put a name with a face, so when things are looking good and things are looking green, which they already are, grass is already starting to grow, and we're already cutting it in February because of some of the work they've done to improve it. And I just wanted y'all to recognize Les and appreciate y'all's confidence in him as the new park superintendent.
Are you up to the task, Les? No problem.
Before he was hired by the city, he was, worked down at the, was that Kenlake? He was at Kenlake, and you know how that's always looked good down there.
Yeah. Oh, you know I'm just kidding you. Congratulations.
Congratulations, Les.
So I just wanted to recognize him. Thank you very much for that little sidebar. Tonight, we have a discussion on the sports park. We discussed this back in June, as you can sell this, June 7th was our budget workshop, and I made a short presentation with it at that point when we talked about breaking the project up into bite-sized portions from a fundraising standpoint. Tonight, you're not going to hear a whole lot from me. You've heard from me time and time again on this, and so, I've brought some folks with me tonight who are interested in the site for several reasons, but they are the ones who are accepted the roles as fundraisers and supporters of it. We had talked even at that time about taking the money that we've already raised, which is now at about $60,000, and put it into the community foundation. We've got David Hutchison, who's been active in the fundraising from the beginning. We've got Jeff Aiken, who is the president of the McCracken County Youth Soccer Association. We've got Dr. Hal Ford, who has children participating in the program, and Dr. Danny Butler, who also does. And they are taking the bull by the horn as far as the fundraising. And I'm going to introduce them to you. We also have, a little later, we've got one, two other folks that we're going to hear from. We're going to talk about the fundraising side of it and what they've done, what they're planning on doing. We're talking about the, we've got representatives of the youth program, both recreational and competitive in the region, and then we've got another person who's interested in another portion of the park. So first up, we're going to have David Hutchison come up.
Okay. Good to have you back with us, David.
Thanks. Well, no, I just want to, first of all, I want to thank you all for giving me this opportunity to speak again. I know you've heard a lot from me, and a few years ago, we talked about big figures and big things, and it's not an easy task raising funds. But we have raised $60,000. Again, the original proposal may not have been realistic, but biting it off in chunks is a lot more realistic. One of the problems we hit with donations, and I think Mark's addressed this, was a lot of people were, even though we had a legal ruling that it was tax-deductible to make donations directly to a municipality, a lot of people and businesses were kind of not open to that idea. So moving it to the foundation of Western Kentucky, I think, is a wise choice. The other thing is, I didn't have a real committee, and what I would like to ask, and they've agreed, are Jeff, Hal, and Dr. Ford, and Dr. Butler, and Jeff Aiken, to serve on that committee to help me raise at least the $250,000 for the first phase. That would mean another $190,000. And what I would really ask is that you give us just a little more time, maybe to the end of this fiscal year, to complete that, your fiscal year, the city's fiscal year, because there has been a lot already invested in it. I know the city's, the land, but also the studies have already been done. The, a lot of the engineering and the environmental studies were completed, and don't want to throw that out. This does have a big economic impact, and Jeff's going to talk about their success with the limited facilities they have now. And again, I just hope you'll give us a little bit more time, and hang in there. Can we go to Jeff?
Why don't we go ahead and bring Danny Butler up at this point? This is Dr. Danny Butler.
Good to have you with us, Danny.
If I can mention any antibiotics or anything, I just left the office a few minutes ago, so I'm trying to make that transition to this. The reason I'm here tonight, initially David called me back when we started this, was to just be a donor and to try to help financially get this started. We have four children, have moved here in 1995. I'm originally from Marshall County and came to Paducah primarily because of the hospitals. And the, this community for us, the big advantages has been the city school systems. We live next to Clark when we first moved here. It's been invaluable. We've got kids right now at Tillman, we've got one in Paducah Middle, two at Clark. And anytime we compete with academic team or go up into the state, I feel like our kids are getting a very diverse education and are proud of where they are in the city. I've been very fortunate to be busy in the medical community and have had two great hospitals in a city that has supported my practice for 17 years. And I think initially I had in my mind that I could give a donation, and then David would, we would get businesses that would donate, and I would be part of it, but didn't really take that much responsibility above that. Part of that, I think, is four kids and busy practice and all the other activities we do. We help with booster clubs and Tillman football and a lot of things, so our time is spread a little thin. But as I've seen, I think during that time, our timing from a donation standpoint with economic conditions has been pretty tough. And some of the businesses that I think we sort of tentatively were leading toward has just, quite frankly, not come through yet. David had called and said, you know, we want to form this committee. And what we've tried to do, or actively doing, is sending out letters to some businesses that we really hadn't tapped into initially. And I think, I think there was such a feeling that this was going to happen, especially when the amount lowered to 250,000. I think there's a lot of businesses that would really like the name recognition of where this is when you're coming into town, from the side of coming in from Marshall County on I-24, to be able to put your business name up in some way of like a naming right or even naming some of the fields. We just, I just look at it as an opportunity to sort of give back to the community, and I, we, I don't say it with any arrogance, I've just, we've had a good practice here with my kids, and it's been a great place to raise a family. And as, as we started looking at the numbers, I had not really looked at how large of a commitment you guys had made comparatively to what we've got to raise. And, you know, if you look at the math of it, I mean, we're 93%, you know, we've, we've got to only get 7 more percent to get, to get the first phase started, which is, you know, pretty far down the road. I think we've got, we have drafted a letter that we are, the committee has, and all of everyone has signed and agreed. We initially, I think, put too much information in it, and we pared that down to primarily naming rights of the park, as well as naming rights of the fields, and then just personal donors. I'm going to ask the medical community to support this, because I've got a reputation that I think I can ask for that. And I think, I think we can at least get close enough that if we see some momentum, that we can reach this in a timeframe that's reasonable to make this happen. I think it's a, you know, we, my kids have played Paducah Storm baseball, which a lot of, if you know sports, has a big, big history here. We have Paducah Storm soccer, I've had kids in all that. We have traveled, I've never been to Jackson, Tennessee, prior to signing up for baseball, and it's a great town, but it's kind of hard to get to. Paducah is very accessible. The reason we spent so much time in Jackson is for their, for their baseball facilities. And if you try to get off work Friday at 5:00 and get there for an 8:30 game, and your coach wants you there and there before the game, I actually thought about the law officers here earlier. I've seen a couple of them in passing, and hope they didn't stop me on the way to Jackson. But, you know, Paducah, if we can just get people to come here, you know, I have friends that come in and, from the medical side, they cannot believe the two hospitals, I mean, when they drive up and see this size town. I don't, I've never seen anyone who came downtown that wasn't impressed. Everybody uses the word quaint, I didn't know this was here. I just think we, we're missing a section of people there. And I know y'all have been sold on the park idea. It's just, I think we need a little more organization, maybe. David's done a lot of work, but I think there, you know, I've got, we've got some access to people that might donate that maybe David didn't know. And I would really like to see that, give us, give us a chance to do that. I think, I think in, on just, on a personal note, a lot of people might be willing to give over time. And our initial donation, our personal commitment, was just a donation that I said, "Well, here, let's, let's try to get something in and get this started." But, and, you know, when you look at it and you say, you know, maybe we could do something over five years or over three years, there might be some additional personal or business places that would be willing. We, I think the committee's got people that are well-rounded and have different areas that we can pull some businesses in. I think in relation to time, it can look like we've not accomplished enough money, but these type projects, this is not something that you expect within a few months to get $500,000 in this economic time. We have just, in the last year, mainly by efforts of David Hargrove, have combined Paducah Storm with another local soccer organization, West Kentucky, to form what's called West Kentucky United, which he'll speak to. That's took years to get enough people to the table and sort of get some of the politics out of it to get soccer more organized here, so that we could pull our efforts instead of Paducah having an okay facility and an okay team, and then a decent team in Mayfield. So I think a lot of work's being done. I think we're headed the right direction. We, I'd like to get those letters out and get some response from the businesses and individuals, and then see if we can bring back some numbers that'll, if we can get this first phase started, I think once people see what's there, the rest of it, I think, will roll. So I would ask for that, and I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Well, I'll just say this, Doctor, that, you know, the city did purchase that land, and we, we took a lot of money to get control of the, of the land. We're committed to having soccer, soccer complex here. I too think it would be good for the community, it would bring people into the community, and I think the children of Paducah deserve better. And, but as the city manager and I talked not too long ago, the soccer community has got to step up, and, and we've got to make a decision on whether we make that a priority or whether we move on to something else that, that needs our financial support. So, you know, we don't have a problem giving you more time. We understand how difficult it is, we understand the economy has not been good. I will urge you to talk to the county. You had Doug Harness, the deputy judge, I think, left when he heard us talking about the soccer complex, but you might, you might want to contact the county. This needs to be a joint project. And if we're going to do it right, the property's in the county, it needs to be a joint project. And so I would urge you to, to talk to the county people and tell them what you're doing, and, and so wish you luck. There'll be a time when we say, "Look, you know, it's, it's time now to move, to move on," but we're not there yet, and good luck on your, on your quest to, to bring in more money.
I think it'll happen. We'll keep working, okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll take a little bit of a shortcut because, and I think Hal Ford will appreciate it. Hal's a bit on the bashful side, but he is fully supportive of this project and program. And we'll bring Jeff Aiken, so he can tell you about the commitment that the McCracken County Youth Organization is, is taking.
Good evening. I'm going to take probably a little bit of a different approach to it. You've heard him talk about the money portion. I'm going to talk about the kid portion of it, which is probably the most important part of it. Last year, this past year, we had over 1,000 kids that utilized our current facility in a different, you know, one realm or another, whether it was competitive soccer, whether it was rec league soccer, a lot of them, it was their first experience ever to kick a soccer ball. And quite honestly, we've, we've made lemonade out of lemons in our current complex. We, we put a lot of sweat equity into it. We're constantly having to rotate fields around. We've got a map drawn out, knowing that every couple of years, we're going to have to take a section of it out of commission because it's settling, and it becomes unsafe for our kids to be playing on it, quite frankly. We're at a point now where our parking lot out there, we're going to have to, have to have it resurfaced and redone because we've got some major dips out there. Natural, natural-made or man-made speed bumps, I guess you could say, because, I mean, they're pretty bad. Our complex, you know, we utilize it for recreational soccer, and we also use it for competitive soccer, and David Hargrove from West Kentucky United will speak to that in a few minutes. But in rec league, we run, our kids run from age four up to age 16. We provide soccer training, and as I said before, a lot of times, it's their first experience ever kicking a soccer ball. We would love to have a first-class facility that we could take our kids to, have them, you know, have them experience soccer the way it should be played. We've got a lot of, a lot of positive things going. We have a lot of dedicated volunteers that work in our organization, a lot of dedicated parents who spend their time coaching the kids. parents who spend their time coaching the kids, training the kids, working on the fields. And I just really, you know, I, I think it's time that we need to get the, the money raised and we get this new complex. You mentioned the, the county a few minutes ago and a couple of years ago, I guess, when it first started talking about the soccer complex and didn't even have a place in line, there was a challenge laid out that McCracken County Youth Soccer couldn't even host a tournament. So two years ago, we hosted our first tournament. We had sixteen teams, you know, good start. We got to a late, late start on it. We were satisfied with it. We had teams from, over in the Louisville area came over. And the biggest compliment, you know, and anytime we had teams come in from out of town like that, we asked them how they liked the, the community, are they spending time? And we had three teams from the Radcliffe, Kentucky area who actually spent a third night here because they had such a good time on Friday night and Saturday night that they stayed Sunday night as well. We host our tournament on Labor Day weekend and so it gives them an extra day to spend some more time. They, they couldn't get over down, the downtown area, how beautiful it was and, and what Paducah had to offer. This past year, we, we went from sixteen teams our first year, we had twenty-seven teams in our tournament this past year, so we nearly doubled it. We had teams from St. Louis, the teams, a team from Radcliffe that was here the previous year came back, Mead County has, has come back. All these people, they're, they're utilizing our hotels, our motels, you know, and, and even the teams that don't necessarily have to stay overnight, they're spending money in our restaurants, they're spending money in our mall, you know, the, the economic impact is there. This year, we're, we should be over forty teams and that's probably going to be the max that we can do in our current facility. And that's really going to be stretching it. We may have to have a couple of our local teams play on Friday night or Friday afternoon just so that we can, can get it all in. Because our, at twenty-six teams, we had just about every field that we could have out there utilized for the full time on Saturday and Sunday and still give people an opportunity if they wanted to get back home Sunday evening or if they wanted to stay in town, have time to, to do other things. We also, as, with our complex, they, they complement the city of Paducah when they come in. They just wish our facilities were nicer. Where we're currently at, we have no running water, other than we can, we can run sprinklers. We, our bathrooms are porta-johns. Our concession stand has no electricity, no running water. We use generators and bottled water to, to, to cook with and, and to clean with. So we, we desperately need a, a better facility and I, I really truly believe that if we can make, if we can bring this to fruition, that the, the tournaments that we host, we, we could host probably a hundred-team tournaments because of our accessibility. We'd have teams coming from St. Louis and teams coming from Nashville, you know, teams coming from Bowling Green. They, I just think that the opportunity is there.
Well, I agree. I agree. And, and, I mean, the facility, we need new facilities, we all know that. So thank you for your support and we're there with you.
Well, we've, one of the, we've, McCracken County Youth Soccer has made a, a sizable contribution already. We're prepared to make another sizable contribution to, towards the, the funding of it, so.
Well, you make a compelling argument and, and I do think to come to the fiscal court and, and make that same argument of, of how badly we need new facilities is, is important. They need to hear that.
Well, we, we appreciate your support. The, the, the kids that are involved in McCracken Youth Soccer appreciate the city's support on this. We do wish that the county would come on board with it. You know, like I said, there was a challenge laid out to us two years ago and, and the individual who laid out that challenge, we sent him a personal invitation and he chose not to show up. So I'm just going to leave you there.
Thank you.
And as Jeff mentioned, David Hargrove is attorney, has offices here and in Mayfield, I think based in Mayfield, but, you know, people from Mayfield are all right. Anyway, we'll accept that. And he is the president of West Kentucky United, a, a competitive program that handles players from probably six to eight counties right now, I think, right now. So, and Paducah is, is a strong part of that now.
Good. Welcome to Paducah.
Thank you, thank you. I'm here frequently, but just as a short introduction, besides having the, we have a law practice office in Lone Oak, actually, near, near Sea Plant, also one in Mayfield, but I'm the commonest attorney over in Graves County too, so get to wear many hats at times and things you do for your children.
That's right.
But I'm here because, I talked to Mark and he asked me because I am serving this year as president of, of West Kentucky United, which is a, a merger of soccer clubs from around here. And I, I know you're, I know this is always money, no matter what, you're always talking about it, I, I fully understand that. But to give you a little background, soccer is kind of a unique sport anyway, in, in the way that it operates. But we've had, over the years, and, and believe me, I was one who, when I was, I had young children, I, I used to pray my daughter would not like soccer because I knew nothing about it. I did not play it growing up. I was a baseball player and whatever else you did around here, and basketball. Knew nothing about soccer and, and that is all she likes. She trains and does everything and so I've, I've learned the sport and, and learned to love it. But we've been kind of scattered all, all, all around. We've got teams in Mayfield, teams in Murray, teams here, teams in Marshall County. And what it kind of does, like anything else, it sort of dilutes the pool somewhat. And soccer is a little different in the fact that we support our high schools and we go through high schools, but when it comes to colleges, looking at things, colleges don't recruit from high schools. They recruit from clubs because they have showcases and things that you go to because that's where it's, their money is spent. They usually have one of the smaller budgets. They don't have the basketball and football budget. So they, they focus the energies on things. So you have to provide opportunities for kids and, and you have to get them trained so that they can go in places and they can compete. And tournaments is one of the places that they compete. And we finally, as Danny said a while ago, I think that those involved finally, at this stage, for the first time ever last year, got together in all these four different cities and said, listen, you know, we are kind of diluting our pool here, we're pulling the same players and all we're doing is really kind of hurting our, our kids. And let's not be so territorial about all this and see what we can do to, to get together. And, and Danny Butler and Jeff and I and Craig Pitcock at the time from Marshall County, we met together and, and had some wonderful conversations. We, and, and then kind of got together and ultimately decided this is what we need to do. So we merged what was West Kentucky Football Club, which was based in Mayfield at the time. Marshall County is now coming with us, they're competitive in, and the Paducah Storm has merged with us and we're also still talking with Murray and I think one day that, that may, may happen. Now, we're, we're now working together as a club. We have some wonderful people that, that are involved in, in putting the efforts out there. The benefit is that we draw as a club, we have kids in, in the club, boys and girls, ages eight to eighteen, that come from anywhere from Metropolis, Illinois, all the way down to Cades, Kentucky. We have some out of, out of Northwest Tennessee that also play. And every county in the Purchase up until, up through Caldwell County. So they, they play with our club. We go to tournaments. We, we try to find a place, we actually go back and forth now in between different areas to, for practices and things depending where the teams are. But I've always said that it, it sort of is a shame really that Paducah, which is the population center here, does not have the facility that they need to bring the kids in. And the benefit to the city and the benefit to all of us is that if you have that good facility, it's kind of one of the field of dreams kind of thing, if you build it, they will come. And I think that's been proven many times over. And one of the examples I can use is Owensboro, Kentucky. Owensboro, Kentucky now has two major soccer facilities. They have two or three major softball facilities and every team in the state goes there now. Owensboro's now going to be hosting the state cup soccer team, which will bring a hundred and sixty teams into this, into that city. They did it last year and, and they're coming back. Well, a hundred and sixty teams, you know, you start multiplying the numbers and that's quite an economic impact just for a weekend. And it's not just one weekend they're talking about. And their facility, their new facility is going to be nice, well, it is nice now, but it's, it's still developing in the Horse Creek thing. But Paducah, in, in my opinion, is comparable to Owensboro, but it's far advanced. I would love, I would much rather come to Paducah than I would go to Owensboro. Number one, you can't get there very, very easily. And, and Paducah is the perfect location and, and as Jeff was talking, you know, we're, we're right down the interstate from St. Louis where we go frequently to play. We're right up the interstate from, from Nashville, which we go frequently to play. It doesn't take, you know, go to Cape Girardeau, we go to Cape Girardeau for tournaments. With a good facility, West Kentucky United actually would, would like nothing better than to call this home, to, to have a big sign like we go in some of the other cities and say, home of, of the West Kentucky United Soccer Club. And, and we, we provide coaches that are licensed, we help train kids, we try to get them ready for college. Even if they don't want to go to college, we try to give them the competitive edge so that ultimately you will see them in high schools and you can, when, if you go to a high school soccer game, you go to a middle school soccer game. You will pick out the ones who have played competitive soccer and have had the training that's necessary. I mean, that's just, just kind of the way it is, anyone who works harder at it. But the thing, if you have that facility here, which, then you're going to have, I think as Jeff told you, I, I think it's probably a conservative estimate at times of having a hundred-team tournaments. Those are getting to be the commonplace kind of thing for those that can, that have facilities to host it. You won't have just one a year. West Kentucky, Marshall County hosts a team now. We used, a tournament, rather, Mayfield used to, but we don't have the facilities. We've got a great facility in terms of fields. Hamilton Park in Mayfield has twenty-six potential fields and, and they're in good shape. We have nowhere to stay. So you can't get people coming from out of town when they don't have anywhere to stay and most of them don't want to drive thirty miles, to be perfectly honest with you. That's what makes Paducah so attractive is the fact that you've got the hotels, you've got wonderful restaurants, you've got the places that, that people will go, you know, downtown that they, that they enjoy going to. And we'd love to be able to call that home and bring everybody in as conglomeration. And we've talked, you know, about that at, at some point. And again, I realize it's money and I'm preaching to the choir here somewhat, but it's, it's one of those things that, that we could, we see the benefit that ultimately if the money can get there with the support here, and I think definitely if it go to the county and, and I'll be happy to, to jump in on that too and go into the county. But if you can do it, I think you will see the positive economic benefit that will, will happen fairly rapidly.
Yeah. Well, thank you. We, we understand that. We really do. And, and to have the regional soccer people calling Paducah home, I mean, those are just some of the benefits that, that we're going to gain by that. So it's, like you say, it's a money situation. We've got a lot of people who support soccer up here. We need the county's support and so I'm glad you're involved and we look forward to hearing more from you. Thank you.
Thank you for listening. Thank you.
Got one more person for you to hear for tonight.
Okay.
And actually, his daughter played soccer, but he hasn't, this, his presentation doesn't have anything to do with soccer.
Oh, it doesn't?
No, but it does have to do with this facility.
All right.
So where's his?
This is Kevin Murphy, former city employee.
We, we know who Kevin is. Kevin, good to have you.
Glad to be here. I've had the privilege to speak here many times before, but I was always on the payroll and it always costs the citizens some money. It's going to be a new lead tonight. I'm not on the payroll. I am the president of the Jackson Purchase RC&amp;D and looking to try to do a community project for the citizens of the city and the region that won't cost them a penny, where they can utilize water as a resource. And what we're looking at trying to do is put in a series of canoe launch boat ramps along the Clark, Clark's River and looking at potentially trying to partner with the city and utilize part of the soccer complex area that's not being utilized for any of the, any of the soccer fields as a launch site for canoes and kayaks. Currently, if you're, if you launched at Shin Bridge Road, is there a pointer up here? There you go. All right. And when I spoke before, I never had to use glasses either, so things do change. This may be, there's the button right there. Okay. Just trying to figure out where we are. Does it work? Yeah. Trying to see where we are. Okay. All right, Shin Bridge Road is right here. And so what we're looking at trying to do is develop some type of launch site here just to get people in the water, you know, start out with gravel. Hopefully apply for some funding through Fishing Game, maybe get a nice concrete ramp in there. There is a good fisheries up through the, the Clark's River. Had the opportunity in October to do the first canoe trip down there. I've lived in McCracken County since nineteen eighty-five and always wanted to go on a canoe trip, but it's hard to get access, there's no public access along the river. So we would build this here and takes approximately three hours to get down to, there is a, a ramp right here at Clark's River Road. So Fishing Game has one put in there and then here's the Tennessee River. So here's your soccer complex, because you can see that whole area, none of that's being utilized. It's all pretty much in the floodplain. We would do nothing more than build a road down to the edge of the river, put in a parking lot, possibly up here somewhere where we would do minimum maintenance. And we could get people on the river for educational purposes, you know, wildlife, recreation and tie right into your, your soccer complex. Here we are out in, in October, going down the river. It's a nice peaceful river, you know, with gas being as high as it is, a lot of people, you know, they drive over to Missouri to go canoeing for the afternoon or up to the lakes. You know, we put in a, a entry point into the river there. They could go out Sunday after church, go out there and do a, a nice canoe and event, couple of hours and then be back at the house with, with a minimal amount of money spent. It's very scenic, you know, it's hardwood, river bottoms, nice big cypress trees, all types of wildlife up and down the river. There's a big cypress tree right here. That is almost to the end, that's Clark's River Bridge that you're seeing in the far. And we're going out to the mouth of the, there's a, you know, anybody from eight years old to eighty, this man here is seventy-one years old. He's a professor out of Arkansas, retired from the experiment farm up at University of Kentucky at Princeton. And he just thought it was a, a wonderful, a wonderful river to, to canoe on. This is on the upper end. I've been on nine miles of it, six miles down river and then three miles up, upriver. About at the ten-mile river point is the West Fork, which goes up into Graves County. And I've been talking to the refuge about possibly putting a launch site on a refuge. Wildlife Refuge mission is for wildlife viewing and hunting, you know, for, for sports recreation and canoeing, it's very limited and that has to be by a special event. But they are willing to work with, with me to get a site in there for the viewing of wildlife. So that potentially would put it up about another nine miles. So we'd have eighteen miles of river to view wildlife and do outdoor recreation and education.
So obviously this would be tied in to the soccer complex, so we need to make sure that soccer complex is going to happen before anything was done on this? Is that sort of your thinking?
Well, you know, everyone that I talked to is very interested in this project. Two businesses have already donated twelve hundred dollars. We've applied for, for three grants. Our goal is to raise twenty thousand dollars. So, you know, we're looking to try to be in the water this summer out there.
Okay.
And we would like the city to, you know, whatever dollar portion we raise, you know, I'm going to do the same speech to the county to get them to help fund the project, but our goal is raise twenty thousand dollars and we would like for you guys to match that amount of money where we could have a nice facility. Like I said, anybody from eighteen to eighty could go out and use the facility. It's nice not for people, the young people that play soccer, it's for everybody. Very unique project, you know, it's a river opportunity for the city to, to partner with this.
Yeah.
So now how much money are you asking of us and the county?
Our goal is raise twenty thousand dollars. I'm going to ask the city for twenty thousand and the county for twenty thousand for the project to get two ramps put in in McCracken County. I've talked to the refuge manager. He is most likely going to fund theirs himself and like I said, then we'll have three, we'll go on up into Marshall County and then there will be two sites in McCracken County.
The Reedland.
Yeah, looking at a site, the county owns some property out. Yeah, looking at a site. The county owns a property out where the ballparks are out in Reedland off Sid Road.
So, you need 40,000? 60?
That's what, that's our goal.
I'm confused on the money because you said 20 from the city and 20 from the county? Then you'd raise 20?
Yes. Yes. We're gonna raise 20 and I would like for you guys to match us each way. You know, the county matches the 20, but total 60,000.
Okay. Okay.
One thing, and if you recognize a couple of people besides Kevin in that, in that picture, Steve Urban was on that float as long, and I was on that float as well. And we, we had a, a great time. You know, you're going down there about two miles an hour. It's something that I see, and Kevin has pledged to work with us, that if we have some kayaks, we've got facility out there that we could do it, that would expand our recreation programming, the, to do lessons and everything else, our summer day camps. It's a great addition to anything. We can do some training on the lake in Noble Park and then go out there and do some terrific programming, recreation programming for all ages.
Yes, right. That's one of those things.
We also have a student from Murray State, senior Caitlin Heights. She's working for us two hours a week, doing some mapping, some brochures, water quality work on, on the river. So, like I said, everybody that I talk to about the project wants to get involved with it. And like I said, I see nothing but success there.
It's a winner.
It sounds like it's a possibility, but I was gonna ask about the canoe rentals for the public. Would that be something that you would be offering, you think, at some point?
I would say possibly some type of business for somebody to go out there and get started on.
It's either that or we could do it, you know, some of those, we do have facility out there. We've got a garage and that sort of thing, that we could store some out there already. And that's one of the things that you can load up, the kayaks that we did, if, they, they come on racks that you can put on trailers and have almost 20 kayaks right behind a pickup truck. And that you could haul it and bring them out there, then do tours, do training. People register at the parks. And we're going on, we're going on training or come about and lease, you know, or rent a, rent a canoe or something like that.
The canoe rental, the land between the lakes has a, a place that does that. And they stay booked during the summer.
Well, one of the other things that we, we are also looking at, the disabled vets programs, that they are really pushing one-person kayak activities, that they are, are capable. And one of the facilities we were looking at does have a, would, we'd, we'd want to put a, an accessible launch from that to provide access for many populations. It's great. As Kevin said, from eight to 80, this is terrific recreation activity, great exercise.
So, you'll keep us posted on the progress?
Exactly. Exactly.
Yes. And what we'd like to do, I went out and I talked to the canoe people in town, which is Hoopers, Dix and Gander Mountain. And what they suggested that in the springtime, that we try to have some type of an event out there to get the thing kicked off. And they said that they would be willing to try to sponsor that, to get the public out to show them, you know, the merchandise that they sell. And on March the 29th, the Jackson Purchase Foundation, we're gonna have Water Awareness Night at Maiden Alley. You all will be getting invitations for that. And we're gonna highlight our water resources in the area, have some people from the barge industry, some of the local engineers, show some environmental films. And we're gonna invite somewhere between the neighborhood, 200, 250 people to, to hear the presentations and just kind of hopefully, I think everybody takes water for granted around here. And, you know, with the barge industry, the recreation that we have, and, you know, the industry potential out here for the water to be used, that we sometimes don't focus on that. That's what we're, we're gonna do for Marshall County.
Okay. Well, thank you, Kevin. Appreciate it. Okay. Thanks, Mark.
Thank you.
Alright. City manager's report.
I have nothing.
Okay. We've got a busy executive session. Any commissioner comments?
I, I would just like to voice my support for the soccer fields and what y'all are doing. And appreciate all the, you're not getting paid for any of that, all the volunteer work you do because you love your kids, the kids around here, and you love soccer and the opportunities it brings to them. And, and just, you know, to have 100 or more team tournament, I don't know what kind of dollar calculation that is, but that's probably well over $100,000 coming into, coming into Paducah and McCracken County for a tournament. And so, the economic impact is gonna pay for itself in just a short period of time. And we know what kind of field we have. I mean, I worked for the city when I was in my twenties and we used to dump over there. And I remember when my daughter played soccer, I would walk the fields out there. And you'd step in holes and twist your ankle. And it's just not safe. You can't irrigate it and you can't have lighting. And it's kind of embarrassing that we have a soccer complex with over 1,000 kids playing on a dump. And so, the county was 65,000. You put the region together with Graves County and Callaway and Marshall, that's a large population. And, and we paid 900,000 for it. And that was under market price. That, that was, we had negotiating on Mark's part. And, and so, we didn't overpay for that piece of property. And I'll just throw it out there, we've talked about it before. There is the possibility at some point of selling that home with a few acres with it that would raise probably 250, $300,000. So, we've outgrown Noble Park. And I think it was a, a good investment. It was not a mistake. But, it will be expensive to develop it. And if we do it piecemeal, as y'all have presented, a little at a time, whatever we can afford over some years, we're gonna have a first-class, fully-developed complex for soccer and canoeing and, and baseball and softball and any number of activities. As this community continues to grow, we need, we need some more park space, parks and recreation. This was, we looked at, Mark, you know, you covered all the territory in McCracken County within a two-mile radius of I-24. I remember we walked six fields. And this was by far the best piece of, of property. And it was unanimous that this would be the one that we should select. And, and so, I don't regret it a bit. I think it's a beautiful piece of property. And, and I'm pleased to know that y'all are busy trying to raise some money. And, and I'm supportive, speaking for myself. And, and I think we all are, that we need to move on with developing it. So, we can give our kids an opportunity to do something they enjoy that changes their lives, or get them a college scholarship and bring people into Paducah.
Thank you, Commissioner. Public comments?
I had a quick question for the, under commissioner comments for the city manager.
Okay.
How are we coming on the independent investigation with the CCC?
I know that inquiries were being made here as recently as yesterday. So, it's, it's not in hand yet. I expect it very soon.
Okay.
Alright. Quickly, we've got, got a busy, busy executive session. You gotta say something.
I won't hold you up here long. We've had a busy day ourselves. Gary Vanderboeck, Commonwealth Environmental Services. We're a nuclear worker advocates for the sick workers in, in the community. We're, we have an office here in Paducah and we're proud to be located here in City Paducah. We have several claimants here this evening that we, that came out to just kind of join me here and support a resolution. We have presented a resolution to the other counties, judge executive, Vicki Vineyard. And we're, we're acquiring signatures for this resolution. And we felt like since you all, you all have several of the claimants that are being denied their compensation within the City of Paducah and McCracken County, we're, we're going before, I believe they've got the county, McCracken County is passing this resolution. Carlisle County passed it today. Ballard County passed it today. Mike Miller's been provided this, Greg Pruitt. So, we wanted to pass this out and let you all be aware of what we were doing to try to bring justice to these claimants that are not receiving their compensation. And it's pretty, pretty serious when you start violating the statutes of this Energy Employee Occupational Illness Act. And I don't know if you all are aware of the act and what it requires people to do.
We, we're fine. We, we just need to look at this and...
Yeah. And, and really, it's not meant for you all to adopt tonight. We made the circle today. And we had some, I, I really didn't know you were meeting every Tuesday night. So, we were gonna try to come down next Tuesday night. And we'll join you then if you have any questions regarding the content of this. And basically, it's, it's everything that's in the statute and in the present, in the executive order. And then it gets to the back and it's site-specific for Paducah, City of Paducah claimants that have been, their compensation, their medical benefits have been withheld. And I noticed, well, Mallory, Mallory just left, I guess. We've got her, I've got her copy right here.
Okay.
The young lady here last week joined us at the county commission meeting. And we had sick workers come in and explain what's going on. And you'll be shocked. And we'd like to maybe do a work session with you. So, so this is a, a resolution for the City of Paducah commissioners to understand what's out there. And Gerald, you'll wanna, since you're gonna be taking over Brent Hausmann's position, I, I'm pretty certain. So, and we're sorry to see Brent leave. But, of course, you know, there'll be a new city commissioner. We were together, Mayor, if you recall, when Ed Whitfield announced the shocking information that the sick workers in his community are being chastised and, and kidded about their illnesses. And the Secretary of Labor has gotten involved. And the director of the program had condoned this for a long time. So, we're the origin of the sick nuclear worker program. So, we want justice. And this is the only way that the senators are gonna be able to see that these workers are not getting paid. And instead of being a popularity contest, we just want everybody to know who they're paying and who's not getting paid. And we have 220 workers and there's probably gonna be 1,000 more. And that's a big, a big economic boost to the community when our workers, and I've got, stand up if you don't mind, many, and Evelyn, these are people that, that protected our country. And when nobody else cared, I cared because I started seeing the pattern of abuse. And these are sick nuclear workers that are being, being rejected in violation of federal law.
Thank you very much. Good to have you all with us tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Gary.
Mayor, I neglected to mention that the mayor and Mayor Pro Tem will both be out of town next Tuesday night. And we will not be having a meeting. We did put some of our business items on the workshop agenda tonight. So, we'll meet again in March.
Okay. Good. So, Commissioner Watkins?
I move that the board go into closed session for discussion of matters pertaining to the following topics. A specific proposal by a business entity where public discussion of the subject matter would jeopardize the location, retention, expansion, or upgrading of a business entity as permitted by KRS 61.8101G.
Second.
Alright. We will not be coming back for any business. So, Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Kayler?
Aye.
Commissioner Watkins?
Aye.
Mayor Paxton?